And we will move on in now to our public agenda. We have Ms. Susan Gallagher listed. Is Ms. Gallagher here?
Um, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. And how about Ms. Donna McKay representing the East Highland Neighborhood Improvement Association?
I'm not that.
Yes, ma'am. If you would just state your name and your address. And what we're gonna do is put five minutes on the clock for you to speak since this is public agenda. And then if you still have additional information, we'll give you another five minutes, okay?
My name is Donna McKay, and I am a resident of East Highland Neighborhood, a part of the Neighborhood Improvement and Watch Association, and I'm the secretary.
Yes, and you can just give your, if you would just give your street. It's required for public agenda if you would just give your address.
Oh, yeah. I live at 1323 21st Street, Columbus.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Shereen Green, and I am the president of the East Highland Neighborhood Watch Group, and I live at 1318 21st Street. Okay, well, I'm not exactly sure how to get this started, but it's a long story. I believe someone is passing out all of the information that we've collected. In the time that I've lived on 21st Street, I moved there in March of 2015. And when I first moved into the neighborhood, it was relatively quiet, for the most part, a breakout every now and then. And here lately, for the past year, we have had several issues of crime and violence and threats coming out of one particular home that's owned by SBD Properties on, at 1315 21st Street. So in the packet of information that you have, that was prepared by the secretary of the watch group, and this is our treasurer, Ms. Lillian Pitts, it outlines OCGA on maintaining a disorderly house and disorderly conduct. And attached to that information, you'll see several different incident reports, police reports. One of them contains a photograph of a bullet that went through one of the neighbor's homes. There's another one, I don't know if you guys have seen it, on WTVM Television Network, WRBL, I'm sorry, report, that showed a bullet hole that went into someone's house. And for the last nine months or so, it's been constant violence and disorderly conduct at the house, as well as threats that have been made to some of the neighbors, and drive-by shootings. Just in the past, I'd say, three weeks to a month alone, we've had several drive-by shootings that it seems like somebody was shooting back and forth at one another at one point. And just a couple of nights ago, we heard a young lady running down the street screaming in a very high-pitched voice, and somebody was chasing her down the street, apparently with a gun, because she was running, apparently for her life. Ran around the corner. We've had several incidents with neighborhood, neighbors where they've called in and said that they, fights have broken out in front of their houses, in front of their homes. And the police report that came back said it was fights involving some of the people at 1315. And one particular police officer told me that there was a "hit," and I put air quotes around the word "hit," out on somebody in the house across the street from us, but he wouldn't tell me who it was. And my understanding is that there's a particular person that's being sought. They know who it is, and they said he's in hiding, and they can't hide for much longer. But they are looking for him. I wanted to take a moment to thank our counselor, Walker Garrett, who's been kinda on top of it. He's been on top of it. He's been keeping in touch with us and letting us know whatever information we need to know at this point. But I myself have received some threats from, I don't know what to say when you have one of your children stand out on the porch and point their fingers at you like that and go pow, 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 like, you know? And my mother says she's gonna beat you behind and all that kind of stuff. Those are the kind of threats that we've been getting. And they're coming from this one particular house. We've already talked to the homeowner, met with the homeowner, and the homeowner doesn't seem to care. So I'm at a loss right now, I would like to cry, but I'm not gonna do it now, about what's going on in our neighborhood and what actions and steps are being taken to do something about it. I'm at a loss right now for anything else. It got bad enough one night till when they started the drive-by shootings. I just went in my kitchen and sat on the floor. I wouldn't even call the police because I got tired of calling them. It's been consistent. And when I first moved into that neighborhood, I could sleep on my front porch. I fell asleep on my porch swing one night. And for the last nine months to a year, I wouldn't do that right now to save my life. So I'm gonna let our secretary come up and say, speak her piece about what's been going on.
Well, pretty much what we're just coming to the council for is just to present the issues that have been occurring on our particular street, also requesting increased police patrol. We don't see the police often on our street. I see them posted other places, but driving along our street to just patrol, that's something that we haven't been able to receive. Also, um, Mom, did you have any to say? So, yeah, that's pretty much why we wanted to present it here to anybody.
I'd like to speak.
Yes.
I don't live on 21st, but I do live in East Highland. I've been over there for about 12 or 13 years. These women, the reason I ended up talking to them, they are retired elderly women, and they're afraid to come out of their house. They don't wanna sit on their front porch, they don't wanna go out and do their gardens, and they're being threatened with bodily harm. And it really upsets me, because who does that to somebody's grandma? But that's why I'm here, because I'm just enraged by the whole situation and the fact that they're not getting the help that they need. And there's been repeated 911 calls. I don't know if you listed them, they've been listed on the page. But, yeah, that's even missing some of the 911 calls, because there have been some since 9/25. But, I mean, it's ridiculous to be retired and not be able to move and to be a prisoner in your own home, especially being an elderly woman. And I'm fixing to go help this woman get her camera straight, because she's staring at the ground when she turns it on. So, anyway, thank you, guys. My name's Brenda Steele, and that's all I have to say, really.
Thank you. Did any of you all want to, ma'am, did you want to speak and say anything? Okay, well, good. Well, I wanted to, first of all, thank you all for coming tonight, and your complaints have not gone unheard. We have tonight with us Captain Kennedy, who's the head of Special Operations Unit, who's been assigned to this particular problem. As you know, I receive emails, and when I do, they don't go to the black hole. I send them right on to the chief. I work directly with the chief on this. And so, we have Captain Kennedy, and we've also had the Crime Prevention Director out there. He's not law enforcement, but sometimes he can help with organizing your great neighborhood associations you have. So Seth's here. Captain Kennedy, you wanna come forward and just speak to what you all are doing and maybe allow, give us a little bit more context about where we are? We appreciate you being here tonight. We know we ripped you out of something else, but this is so very important, so thank you.
Thank you. So my name's Captain Kennedy with the, with the, unfortunately, see, we can't hear you unless you're at the mic, so. Okay. My name's Captain Kennedy with the Columbus Police Department Special Operations Unit, and the patrol division is the officers that are gonna be responding to the calls for service in East Highland. They also, they respond to the 911 calls. They also regularly patrol that area. My unit, which is made up of uniformed officers as well as undercover officers, for the last several months, because we have been getting complaints in that area, we have officers that are in that area, actually, on the days that we work every day, other than the days we're pulled for other details. And over the last several months, we have served search warrants in homes in that area, not at that particular house, but in that, in the East Highland area, with individuals that have been selling illegal narcotics. We've served commercial gambling search warrants. We have arrested individuals for stealing cars in the area. We've also made numerous traffic arrests, and traffic citations have been written, and illegal narcotics have been seized as a result of those traffic stops. So we are in the area, and we are making arrests, and my unit, obviously, you would not hopefully recognize the plainclothes officers, but the marked units are in that area on a regular basis. I do sympathize with you for the situation that you guys are going through, and I hear your frustrations, but I know that my unit's been up in that area on a daily basis for the last two to three months, and as a result of our efforts, arrests have been made.
Well, you know, and it's one of those things, Ms. McKay, and to the other neighbors, that there's no solace until it is done. I mean, you know, until it is over and this situation has ended. Trying is no solace. But I want you to know, and the people who live at this house should know, we're watching you. And we are, of course, bound by the law. We just can't go marching into people's homes, as you know, and nobody would want that. And so, we're gonna do everything within the law and in the proper process to make sure that neighborhood's returned safety and community that you expect and that you deserve. So this is that very frustrating period where we hadn't had an opportunity to do the things we want to do. But we are watching very closely and very carefully. So know that we're there, plainclothes or otherwise, all over the place. I didn't know if, Seth, you wanted to say anything about the non-law enforcement efforts that we're working on?
Well, you know, Ms. McKay and her daughter and I have had several conversations in their home, actually. We're fortunate that Councilor Garrett has been extremely active in this neighborhood with us. We've met at a coffee shop one time. They're doing all the right things that they can do as citizens. They make the calls anytime, they email me, they email Councilor Garrett, I know, Mayor, they've emailed you. All my emails go to Major Kennedy, and sometimes I've emailed Captain Kennedy, based on what the information was. But they're doing everything right. They're doing everything that we ask neighborhoods to do in order to stop the issues in their area. East Highland is a really good place to live, but they've got some little pockets of little issues here and there, and one of them specifically is that house. They've had some house parties there, they've had noise ordinance violations on numerous occasions, as you can see from the reports that they provided. And I think it's just gonna take a little bit of time, but they're doing, like I said, everything possible to make this right. They're doing everything that we ask neighborhoods to do to help law enforcement do their job.
Great, thank you. All right, and we have a few counselors that would like to speak, ladies, so bear with us a bit. We've got Counselor Garrett.
Mr. C., manager, and Mr. C., attorney, I mean, we've been working with the Neighborhood Association for a while, and I understand a lot of these problems are related to landlords. And they're renting the properties to folks who are doing bad things, and we're not able to always give them a warrant, but I would like a briefing on what we could do civilly, if we could amend code or ordinances to basically allow us, because this list, this is, I, they've emailed me, but I had no idea the extent of the 911 calls. And when it gets to this extent, I think we should have some sort of condemnation power or some sort of power that if a landlord is not willing to clean up his property, and he's gonna let criminals live there who are gonna threaten my constituents, they don't, they don't deserve that property. They don't deserve to contaminate our neighborhoods. And if there's something we can do legally on the civil side, I'll support that ordinance. I need to know just what we can do legally, though. If there's multiple violations of the disorderly conduct statute and multiple police reports, and it's coming from not just one source, but multiple neighbors, there's gotta be something we can do to penalize the landlords, because they're allowing the folks to come in, they're taking the cheapest rent they can, and there's a reason they're getting cheap rent. It's because they're letting people who don't belong in the neighborhood there. And these folks have worked very hard since I first got in office and before then to clean up the neighborhood, and I'll support whatever we can do to, if you've got some sort of recommendation, Mr. C., manager, if you've got a recommendation, I'll support whatever we can do on the ordinance side to help add some teeth to take care of these landlords.
We do have, one thing we can do, so I'm gonna take this off the table, because it may or may not be applicable, but we have done in the past, certainly in the last eight years, and I don't know, since you've been on council last two years or so, where we can threaten to take property from a home, from a landowner, because they've allowed their house to become a criminal haven. And so you all may remember, we've done that. It is, it is a very laborious process, a very time-intensive process, but you have to have a record of a couple of things, that the landlord is profiting from allowing violence, drugs, and prostitution. It's very narrow. And so, places that we've been successful are, for instance, strip clubs, where they're taking in a lot of money. There's been innumerable, you know, complaints, arrests, and prosecutions of prostitution at the strip club, around the strip club. There's been innumerable drug convictions, drugs, prostitution, violence, if I didn't say drugs. But, and so, even from what I'm seeing, disorderly conduct, shots fired and all that, and it really has, it can't be outside the house, it has to be in the house. I know that's crazy, but it's a state statute. So that one may not be applicable, and that's been a very effective one for us. But I, so I'll get that one maybe off the table as a point of discussion. We'd have to have much more information about drug busts, activities of prosecution, if it was actually prosecuted, and then, you know, God forbid, violence that occurs there, pretty significant violence. So, Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything other than that one statute we've used before that might be helpful?
Well, apart from that, the owner, if there's any involvement in these criminal activities, they can be cited just like anybody else to Recorder's Court. Of course, the police would have to do their undercover investigation, and if it's a non-resident landlord, then you run into a problem of nobody being here locally to cite, but...
Could we use, similar to what we just passed, as far as where we force the property into abate of nuisance, or abate, like the stockpiling ordinance we just changed? Could we do something like that, where if they've been cited multiple times, we force them to abate the nuisance, which in essence is kick out the tenants?
Well, you can on the business license issue that we've looked at, where they have two or more violations within a year, but the problem here is it may just be a residential use, and there's no license to revoke. Normally, the chief would come along and recommend revocation of the license, that ends the problem, but here, if you've strictly got just a landlord-tenant situation, the police have got to do their undercover investigation and get multiple convictions to bring into play the criminal haven statute that we've used before. But it really is, you know, a manpower, law enforcement problem to get those resources on it.
Yeah. You have to have, and just for the Neighborhood Association, you know, those are the things you're really looking for. If we can get those kinds of complaints and convictions, drugs, violence, and prostitution. And I hope none of that's going on, by the way. I hope it's just noise ordinances and obnoxious people, because I don't wanna wish any of that other on you. But in order for us, in a residential, we've only had two that have been successful. One was where a woman was living in the house, and I think her sons, maybe, or some relatives were literally running drugs out of the house, and they were repeatedly arrested and, you know, all sorts of sting operations and all that. And the city literally took the property from the woman. Another was when the hole down on Wade Street, you may remember, just had a decades-long history of shootings and prostitution and drug busts, and we came in and threatened to take the property, and they just deeded it over to the city, because they were, couldn't deal with it. So, and then, of course, as the city attorney says, it's much easier when they have a liquor license or a business license, because that's a privilege, and we can revoke those. So when it's residential, it just gets so hard. I just wanted to explain that a little bit more, so that you understand what we need to take those kind of corrective actions. It may be our best route is, oh, I see, we've got a bunch of people here, so let's let them talk, just more intensive policing and community work and pressure on the landlord to do right. So I know you've already been down that path, but, okay, we've got, we've got the mayor pro temp.
I want to ask Councilor Woodson, what do we use when we took the house in, um...
Yep, that's what I was waiting for.
Kendrick's quarters.
That was the one where the woman lived in?
That was the Hubbard House.
Let's see, hold on a second.
Yes, that was the Hubbard House. That was when Senator Harbison helped us. He found that law and the state law. There's a law that authorizes, but there has to be at least three convictions in the house in order to do it. Once there's three convictions in the house, the state, not the local government, the state takes over the property. And once they do, they can either give it back to the neighborhood, or they give it to the city, or whatever. And it was the Hubbard House. And it was the incident that the mayor was saying, that's what I was trying to reach out to Garrett, to tell him, hey, there is a law that you can try. And with these offenses like this, I guess, and him being an attorney and stuff, he can look at it better than I can, but it just has to have at least three convictions. And if three convictions are done on that property, the state can take it away. When it was taken away, it was a sting operation, it's not gonna happen overnight. When we did take it, I remember, because the lady felt, faked it sick, but we were ready with the ambulance. We were ready with the ambulance, because we knew, I got criticized a lot in the paper because she was an elderly lady. But the problem was that her family members were taking advantage of her and putting her in this situation. So it can be done, I've seen it. I was there when it was done. But the thing is, it takes time, and it has to be some convictions, and people have to be willing to stand up. And it seems that you're willing to, because you're fighting for your community, and I applaud you for that, because not everyone does. But I can assure you, you'll just have to go back and, Councilor Garrett can see if there's been any of those on there. If there is, you can, because Senator Harbison helped us, and that's how we got the Hubbard House. And I always will remember the Hubbard House.
There is some hope. Counselor Barnes.
I'd like to commend you ladies for having the courage to stand up to that type of abuse and threats for your neighborhood. And ma'am, I can only imagine just how difficult it is to have someone subtly, a threat, even a subtle threat, is worrisome. And I'm glad, Counselor Garrett, that we are finding a way, because I'm in complete support. No one in this city should have to undergo what you're going, and there's gonna be another situation coming up pretty soon next. But I want to commend you for sticking together, because that's really, in essence, that's really what it takes, to stand up to these bullies, to these individuals who are trying to take over your neighborhood. They don't have the right to do that. You have every right to stand up, and I'm glad to hear of the discussion that you have, your counselors backing 150 percent. Also, I think I can speak for everybody on the council and the mayor, that you have our support to do, but I know it's a time-consuming process, but if you stay focused, you will be successful. And thank you so much for having the courage, the intestinal fortitude, to stand up to all this here.
And Counselor Davis.
City Attorney, as it relates to disorderly conduct, OCGA 161139, do we already have an ordinance that's on the books that is financially punitive, or that recognizes, I guess it recognizes through the police department, they determine if it's a misdemeanor? I guess it'd be a misdemeanor, right? As far as record. Would we have anything, any further?
If they charge them under this state law, it's a misdemeanor. They charge them under our ordinance for disorderly conduct, it's not technically classified as a misdemeanor, but it's still up to a thousand-dollar fine, so.
So there, we already have an ordinance?
Yes, we have an ordinance and the state law.
When it comes to, if it's determined, how many offenses?
Well, it's in the discretion of the officer which route they go, state law or an ordinance violation, but each offense, it can be a penalty up to a thousand dollars.
The officer has the ability to find them, or the court?
No, they can cite them and take them to court, or arrest them, but...
And the judge could administer a fine.
Each offense is up to $1,000, right.
Could we, I guess, as a municipality, could we strengthen that, or even...
No, state law won't let you go above the $1,000 for an ordinance violation. That's the cap, cap on a misdemeanor, too, a state law offense.
This fine would be administered in Recorder's Court.
Right, uh-huh. Any of the Recorder's Court judges.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we have Counselor Thomas.
I just want to say to, to the group, Mr. Brown said East Highland is a good place to live. I grew up at 1127 21st Street, and I would want to encourage Captain Kennedy and Mr. Brown to continue to work very, very closely with these neighbors and see if, staying on top of it, I know you are, you always are, but you see the level of concern that council has, as well as this neighborhood. So I would hope that you will stay on top of it. And for the neighbors, Captain Kennedy said you don't always recognize the undercover car that's in the neighborhood, which is planned that way. But I do know, having worked with some of, in some other neighborhoods, that they are there, and they are making the cases. And so, stay on, stay on top of it as much as you can, and it may be, you know, that if we, if we drive these folks out, that's okay, we'll deal with them wherever they go. But, and I don't know, typically, these kinds of things, the landlord may own more than one house in this neighborhood. And if they do, we need to be on top of all of that. So hang in there. We're gonna do whatever we can to make it better. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing to Park Ward?
Yes, uh-huh.
These ladies are not backing down from nothing. I was talking to Ms. Pitts for over an hour on the phone last night, and she said, they done messed with the wrong old lady. I am not backing down. They, they're the last line of defense, because if they fall, the neighborhood goes, you know? And so, Ms. Shereen and Ms. Pitts are like, uh-uh, they done messed with the wrong old ladies. So thank you, sir.
Excellent. And Counselor Davis, were you up, or was that for something else? Counselor Garrett, is that, did you have something else to close?
Uh, Mr. C., Attorney, is the fine for disorderly conduct, would that be against the person who's renting the house?
Well, I think you'd have to have some personal involvement. Somehow, there's gotta be causation with involvement of the tenant himself.
We amended the, we amended the ordinance, at least as far as codes enforcement went for other items, where we could go against either the tenant or the landlord, because we have a lot of absentee landlords. And my thought is, I mean, Captain Kennedy and Director Brown, y'all could correct me if I'm wrong, but I would imagine most of our criminals are renters, not owners of land. Would that be right? So if we can make it, if we can make it financially and practical for landlords to operate in this town, because they personally can be fined after some sort of set number of violations, that would get their attention. They'd start screening their folks, and I mean, I did dispossessories before I left my old law firm, and we evicted people, and some of the good landlords, it was like, one violation, you're out, and you're on the street, and they evict you. If you have any type of criminal activity, and that's not happening in some of these neighborhoods, and if there's a way we can do that and enforce it against the landlord, we could do, I think we could see dramatic reductions in crime, if we make it where you cannot afford to do business here, if you're a landlord and you have criminals living in your neighborhood.
I think what you're gonna run into is trying to impute the criminal intent and go from the tenant to the landlord, impute that intent, which is very hard to do. The better route is the criminal haven statute and taking of the property, and actual taking, if you can get the conviction for these certain offenses, and the police department is familiar with that procedure.
Okay. Well, if we get, just if you can, just let me know if there's any other jurisdiction that's gotten away with going against a landlord? that's gotten away with going against a landlord. I mean, I think that could be something that could be a dramatic shift in the way our crime is fought.
All right. And we have Councilor Woodson.
Clifton, I have a question for you. Is there, is there a legal way where a letter could be sent to the owner, letting them know of these violations that are occurring on his property, and that after so many convictions, he can lose his property? Because I know in the Hubbard house, you know, we just took the property from the owner. I'm not sure if they were renting it, or they were the owners, but I know they, the owners lost the property. So, based on what he's saying, I'm thinking that if we gave notification to the owner, letting them know, "These things are occurring on your property," it is going to go public, it's public record. Anybody can look up who you are, under the state statute, after so many offenses, we can take your property away. I don't know if we could legally do that or not.
That can be done. The mayor and police chief have sent letters.
We've done that before. And let me get with the city attorney, you have to be real careful about, you know, threatening certain things. So, let me get with the city attorney and just chat with him a bit about what, if we could write a letter. I'm happy to write a letter as public safety director, saying, you know, "We're watching your property and we're unhappy with," you know, and it can be strongly worded. But let me get with the city attorney and make sure that we don't give them ammunition against us.
Long as it's just a notification.
And I'm, I'm just saying, just, you know, I don't know, that's why I'm asking, just a note, let him know, "Look, we know about this, this is going on. Want you to know that this, this can happen to your property." And then it's up to that person, because everything is public record.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, great discussion, ladies. Thank you so much, and I hope you at least feel a little better.
Madam Mayor, Captain Kennedy.
Yes.
I just, I just wanted to address what Mr. Walker said. I just had a meeting last week about the same issue in another area, and that is a consistent problem, where landlords are renting these houses out, and we're hitting two and three search warrants at a time at multiple houses, at the same house in multiple areas. So, it would be a, if we come to a resolution, it would probably be a resolution for numerous homes in numerous areas in the city. So, just, I just wanted to point that out. So, thank you, Councilor Walker.
Great. All right, ladies, yes, ma'am.
Last, but not least, I'd like to mention that anybody back here is willing to be deputized and licensed to carry.
Yeah, I bet, I bet. All right. That's right. Well, you guys, just, you call, the folks who are the professionals know how to do it. You're taking risk enough, so we thank you very much. And, and Captain, thank you for being here. Seth, thank you for being here. And Captain, you may obviously want to make sure they're being watched in the short term, particularly since they've come forward in this public way. Okay? All right. Thank you all. We'll go ahead and move on to public agenda. I know we've got folks patiently waiting. Mr. Olson, is Mr. Olson here? He was here. Mr. Paul Olson?
Have he left? Did he leave because his back was burned?
Oh, no.
But he had someone else that was going to stay and speak for him.
Okay. I know we have several people, so ma'am, if you'd like to come forward and state your name, and he was representative of a community issue, and so, as long as you're representative of the same issue and same community organization, if you would, just state your name and address, please. And same circumstance, I'll put five minutes on for you all, and then we'll see how it goes from there. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Ladana Smith. I live at 4119 Althea Drive. It's in the Edgewood area of Columbus. I'm here about a halfway house, a boys' youth house, not really know what to call it. It is at 2608 Juniper Drive, or Juniper Avenue, which is, I'd say, within 1,000 feet of my house. And I'm here representing my neighbors, my family, friends, everybody in this neighborhood. As far as we can tell, this house was opened and established in March, and since then, there has been numerous 911 calls, police involvement, and such as that. Now then, it has come down to a commercial, breaking and entering, twice, a vehicle stolen, and that is from these boys that are being transported from other places in Georgia, Savannah, Atlanta, Albany. They are not from here. And to my understanding, there is around 165 to 75 of these houses in Muskogee County. When the boys are brought in, they're brought in and the houses are slid into the neighborhood. They're quietly put in. There's no notification, there's no anything, just the house opens. The people that are opening these houses, and I hate to say it, are a lot of police enforcement, they are a lot of firemen, they're city officials, as such as that, to where they know how to work the program to get these houses in. These are boys that are from a correctional institute that have not quite reached the age to go into adult prison. So, they're giving them this opportunity to be placed in another county, because supposedly they don't know anybody there, which takes about five minutes in our school systems to find out, because the minute they get there, they're enrolled in that local school. So, they're riding the school bus with our teenage daughters, with our sons. They're glorifying the prison system, that it's a good, you know, oh, I'm bad, I'm tough, I'm whatever. One of these young men, I noticed, had an ankle bracelet, walking around my neighborhood. Drawed attention, quick. The next time I seen him, he was speaking with a 14-year-old girl while her grandma was not there, that she had got off the bus. He was speaking with her. I immediately, when her grandmother got home from work, straight down there and informed her of this house. The way I was informed of this house was the man across the street who has two young daughters, like young adult daughters, pooping, hollering, whatever, from this house. The next time I seen him, he was sitting in front of my house, smoking marijuana, with another gentleman that had met him there. They did not walk up together, and that gentleman was not from that house. So, they had already made contact. I went straight to the house, banged on the door, took a good amount of time, I mean, I was banging. I'm not somebody that puts off trouble. I'll butt it right in the head. So, I went down there and I was banging on the door. A lady comes up, eating, eating her a biscuit or whatever. I told her that one of her residents was in front of my house, smoking marijuana, and when he knew, I seen him, it didn't faze him at all. When the other tenant, I guess you'd say, of the house heard what I was saying, he got knocked me down, running down the street to inform the boy with the ankle bracelet on, that I was down there. She informed me, okay, and shut the door. I called 911, they came, spoke to me, and then went down to the house. I never heard anything else about it. We have watched the boys walk around the neighborhood, get on the school bus, there's been hump team, 911, Pops has all the information. Mr. Olson's business is the one that got, or his daughter owns the businesses, in our neighborhood, within walking distance. It's the one that got broke into twice. His truck or van got stolen. The three boys were arrested. One of them supposedly told all the stories about what was going on. But what concerns me is, there's a lot of these houses in the community, and this house in my community is stopping our kids from playing in the front yard, they're stopping our older residents from walking around the street because they're outside. The street that this house is on, on whatever day their family day is, is completely shut down. Cars parked, people outside yelling, screaming. The resident that lives to the right-hand side is moving out. She's been there for six years. This is interfering with her work. She works at home, she has a small child. There's so much noise coming from that house during the night, that her husband cannot continue his job. The people to the other side, when they're outside, there's rocks throwed over the fence. She is cursed at. They say that there's smell of marijuana coming from the backyard. A window has been broken out of a car in there, and I don't, I don't think it's right. I don't think that we should be able to have to put up with this. I've been in this neighborhood since 1996. I lived one block over when I was in Edgewood Elementary in fourth grade. This, I mean, our neighborhood is good, and if, probably if you looked at the 911 calls, our whole neighborhood does not put out this many 911 calls, till this house came in, and it's coming because of this house. These houses are nonprofit. They do not pay property tax, and they receive 15, the minimum, minimum they receive from these houses is $1,500 a person that's in the house. If they keep it under a certain amount of people in the house, they don't have to notify anybody. Just slide it right in. And they're picking neighborhoods that are kind of quiet, to where they don't really observe what's going on until the problem starts. But I don't think it's fair that Muskogee County should have to foot the bill for this, for one, because they're not paying property tax, but yet the cops are coming, the sheriffs are coming, the marshals are coming. We're paying for this. And then the people in the house, they don't care about these boys, it's just a job. They get paid. So, how can you have a nonprofit organization with no, no uniformity, no programs for AA, any kind of abuse, anything like that? They're just put there. And it's, I mean, I don't understand it. And anything else, I'm either?
My name's Karen Ayers, and I live at 4131 Spirea Drive. I live a couple of houses down from Dana. And these boys, young men, I don't know exactly what the ages are that they are in the house. They, they are out on the street all hours of the night, the morning. They do get alcohol, we don't know how. So, if this home is being monitored, has a person in it that's supposed to be monitoring the people that are in there, but there's places in our neighborhood that they'll go and sit and drink and smoke and do whatever, and they leave their trash everywhere. And there's been numerous, numerous, numerous police calls for people fighting there amongst themselves in this place. So, I don't, it's just, it's a shame. And then, when these young men approach these young children in our neighborhood, and then they also, I just did find this out the other day, that these boys are also riding on the school bus. It's just, it's mind-boggling to me that, because if something happened to my child, I would be in jail.
And the, the people that run these houses cannot touch these boys. They cannot put their hands on them, they cannot restrain them, they cannot punish them, they cannot, they, they have to be a hands-off situation. All they can do is call 911.
Okay. And let's, I see that there's several other people, so if you're here with the, with this group, I guess, just sort of raise your hand and, and let us see. I think, ma'am, are you here with this?
Yes, she is.
This group, and yes, ma'am, back there. Okay. Anything, just a few more seconds, sirs. Did you want to add a few things? We've got some counselors lined up, want to talk about it and ask you some questions. So, did you want to say a word or two? Are you, are you done?
Yeah, I'll say something. I have numerous rental properties there, and all the families have children. I have no complaints from them, but as a real estate man, real estate broker, we're responsible for things like that, and we have to notify people in that neighborhood. And if we don't, and we do it in writing, or don't do it in writing, to cover our heiny, you know, it's a problem for me, and sure, we sure don't want any problem from them. And then when property comes vacant, you have to tell them then, and it might be to the point where they say, "Well, we don't want to live here." They'll say, "Where is that house? I'll have to show them." Now, this little lady was, had more items than, because I just got in, into this last night, and you can blame me here for, for Pop Barnes, and he asked if we wanted to speak, but it's a concern, and, and like I said, I have rental properties there, I don't live there, but I have a responsible to them tenants. And my responsibility is, you know, letting them know when they might want to move. I just learned about it, but I've driven down that street, and those boys play basketball in that street, and you come down that street, they act like it's their own turf, and they give you real nasty looks that you have to go through there, and, and it bothers their, you know, shooting hoops. And there's one, I wouldn't even want to confront him, he looks mean. I don't know their age, but I know they're teenagers, and it's, that's about all I can say. But this little lady.
Thank you. Do you, sir, have anything to say? I'm trying to keep it within the 10 minutes and don't want to give anybody a different rule than the other. So, yes, sir, did you want to close out?
Yeah. Andy Purdy, I live at 2612 Japonica. Yeah, up until this house opened, we had no problem with letting our kids go out, walk around the neighborhood. Ever since this house has opened, we're really scared to let them go out, because these kids are seen walking around, smoking marijuana, drinking beer. And I know for a fact, they have followed my daughter up from our house to the local Family Dollar, and then followed her back, and she's 12.
Wow, wow. All right, thank you so much. This is so alarming. And we have been doing some work, we got a whole bunch of folks. I know Pops wants to talk a bit, and then I want to hear from our city attorney to sort of explain what this is, how these houses even get licensed, what we can do locally, because we're, like a lot, a lot of this is state law, so like a lot of communities, we're really struggling to figure out what authority we have here. And so, but with that, let's, let's open up the conversation. Pops, you want to start it off?
Yeah, we had a neighborhood meeting, about 20 people showed up. But this area in my district is, there's never been a call, hardly a call. It's very peaceful, all the neighbors get along, lawns are cut. But about eight months ago, Donna gave me a call, and she told me that, about this house here. And the most disturbing thing about it is the fact that the young men were leaving out of the house, the containment house, going with ankle bracelets, going to someone else's step and smoking marijuana. What really prompted me to, to me is the fact that they were following. I think they followed your daughter, but there were a number of other young ladies that, 12 and 13, that these young men were going and speaking to and following. So, I called this, and, and someone went out there, and as I told Donna, when they went to the house and spoke with the people, they just, they didn't see any disturbance whatsoever. Subsequent to all this here, I contacted the police department, and from June the 6th to October 1st, there are 25 911 calls, ranging in everything from the residents, those boys leaving out and being missing, to physical disturbances and drugs. Now, 25 from the 6th of June to October 1st, 25 911 calls. And I'm going to pass this around to the other counselors, so that they can see, this is, this thick packet of disposition, there, thank you, and this right here. Fortunately, I'd like to, to, to give a compliment to Ms. Yvonne Ivy, because she's taken a deep breath, but every time, Mr. City Manager, when I call her, she always does her research. There has to be something, something has to be done to bring some type of relief to a neighborhood that is peaceful. But you have this house that opened up, it has completely disrupted not just the street that the house is on, but that entire community. There are about five or six streets. I went there the other day, and I saw the, the basketball goalie. When they decided to go out there and play, they shut the street down. No cars can go through, and as this gentleman said, these people look mean, and you don't want to really approach them. This is all from a neighborhood where the character of the neighborhood is very peaceful, neighbors got along, one of the best neighborhoods in my district, and they have changed it. This house has changed it. And so, I did confer with Yvonne, because there has to be some type of remedy to give these good citizens some type of redress. And as always, she always comes through, and, and there is, and I mentioned at the meeting last night, that what she said, in fact, I've got it written down, it went away on one of the copies, that we can, each of you citizens can complain to the state and do a complaint. the state and do a complaint, uh, with, and there's enough facts that you have here in order to support it. Um, as the city manager, as the, uh, city attorney has said, we're somewhat constrained, because it was taken out of our hands, as I explained to you last night-
Yes.
-by the state. But there is a process that you, and I would like for Yvonne to come forth and, and explain about the process.
Hey, one other thing is, I understand they're licensed, and, uh, if there's problems in the community, that the city has issued a license, that license can be withdrawn. I'm not telling you what to do, but the process of them getting in there and having complaints, that it just sprung right on us, no notification at all that that was going to be put in there.
Well, Yvonne's going to speak to this, and she has a solution that each of you citizens can, and you want to sound, this, I would like for this city to follow through on a complaint in the same process. Yvonne, could you speak, and thank you so much, Yvonne. I could just hug you for, for, for all the research that you've done for this here.
No problem. Thank you, Councilor Barnes. Um, the Georgia Department of Community Health, they regulate personal care homes, group homes, um, anything that requires residential assisted living. The Georgia Department of Community Health regulates, um, those types of business establishments, regardless if it's for-profit or nonprofit. And you can log, log, log in your complaint, um, they have a website, and I forwarded that link-
I have it right here.
And all the, um, the complaining party has to do is log into that, uh, website, and they can remain anonymous if they want to. Um, just indicate the name of the, um, the facility, the address, et cetera, and that many number of complaints coming into the Georgia Department of Community Health, they should be able to address those issues, especially if that, um, the owner of that, uh, business establishment is receiving any type of state subsidies, um, for the, uh, for the residents that are staying there.
And to add on top of this is the fact that not only have, are they terrorizing that community, that whole area there, but they burglarized Terry's Forest on Macon Road not once, but twice. And so you can see that these individuals are not being properly supervised, and so the responsibility falls on that home. And so there, I've, I've gotten some additional, Mr. City Attorney, could you speak to the additional things that can be done as well, as far as, uh, uh, someone taking legal action?
Well, let me make a couple of points, Counselor. I want to follow up on Ms. Ivy a little bit. The Department of Community Health, anybody can make a complaint with the department in Atlanta. Uh, she, they do have a website. They've also got a complaint phone number. I'll read it out, one eight hundred eight seven eight six four four two, and that's the Georgia Department of Community Health, one eight hundred eight seven eight six four four two. The state, the state licenses these groups, and if they have complaints, they'll send an investigator down here to find out what's going on. But more important than that, if any citizen or neighbor sees criminal activity, whether it's drug use, vandalizing, destroying property, public intoxication, whatever, you need to immediately call nine-one-one. Like Captain Kennedy said earlier, you know, it's a thing that they will jump on immediately if they know about it. But you've, if there's criminal activity going on, you need to call the police. And that leads into my third point. There is a local license, sometimes, if the county knows about these places, they've received some sort of a local license, uh, that lets them operate in a community. Now, a local license in Columbus can be revoked by this council if the chief of police makes a recommendation to revoke, but it's got to be based on two or more convictions of the owner, or the manager, or an agent of that facility or home. Now, if they get these, uh, two, two-plus convictions in a twelve-month period, the chief can recommend revocation of the local license. Now, that's just local, it's not state. You've still got to complain to the state officials to look into it and revoke them at the state level. But we do have that on the books here in an ordinance form. Uh, if you can get these convictions of the owner or the agent, two or more, you can take them to a recorder's court, get convictions, then the chief can recommend a revocation. They'll have a hearing right here in front of the council, and this body can revoke the local license. But so, so there are many parts that interplay here. You got the state level, uh, the local level, but, uh, most importantly, if you, if anybody sees criminal activity, neighbor or citizen, call nine-one-one.
Can I say one thing?
Mm-hmm.
One hurdle we're having to jump over is this home is owned by Greg Countryman.
Wait, wait, you say one more time, we can't hear you.
I said, one hurdle that we're having a hard time jumping over, as far as getting police reports and, uh, things wrote down, like when I called, it was not even wrote down. The owner of this home is Greg Countryman. He owns this home.
Okay, and let me say yes to that.
Know this, that no, no one's above the law, obviously, but everybody's entitled to the process, right? And, and I know earlier you said something about, uh, law enforcement or police officers, and there is a distinction between the marshal, the sheriff, and the police department. So when you dial nine-one-one, the only people that are responding, police department. And so the individual you named is in another branch. So don't, don't confuse the two. I just want you to know that that's a different branch. And so, um, let's work the process like we would with anybody, okay? And, um, and I think you've received some good information tonight. Let's see, uh, we've got, Counselor Barnes, did you want to finish up?
Yeah, I did, but, but Donna, I'm going to get with you all. I told you, I had mentioned yesterday, um, evening, that there, about this, um, what that, what Yvonne had given to us, and we're going to act on that. I, first of all, wanted you to come here, just to make counsel aware of what's going on. But yes, we need to take action by appealing to the state, and we also need to get with the chief of police on what the city attorney just got finished saying. So primarily, I wanted to let this council and our viewing audience know what is going on, because there are other, as you saw with the previous, there are other areas that are having problems as well, and we're not impotent. And, and the council here backs you, because they want you to have the quality of life that you were having prior to the house coming to the neighborhood. So I'm going to get with you, get with some of the people in the, that were there at the meeting yesterday, find out a good time. I'll get with, uh, Rick Jones and Mr. Will Johnson and the city attorney and the chief of police, so we can get something going, definitive and concretely, so that your neighborhoods and the neighborhood in that Edgewood area can go back to normalcy. And I want to commend you and, and each of you here for having the intestinal fortitude and the courage not to let individuals come in and damage the integrity of your neighborhood. And so I appreciate you. And so I'll get together with you, and Donna, give me a, give me a call. Let me know what would be a good time, and I'll get with the city attorney and, uh, planning and all. Thank you all for, yes, sir.
One more thing, this little lady here.
Oh, yes.
I dare say she's in her higher eighties, and she lives right behind that house, and, uh, you know, there's a back fence there, a wooden fence, but, uh, you know, I'm not calling anything, but people like that can climb a fence just like-
Yeah, they're, she's afraid of the safety issues.
The worst thing of all, her daughters want you to stay overnight with them.
Well, that, that young lady right there, by the way, I won't tell you her age, but what, it's gotten so bad, she walked the neighborhood every day, she's afraid to even walk, because these kids, they walk the streets, and the young girls are petrified. They don't walk the streets anymore, walking their dogs. That, something like that should not even happen anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And, and you know, you've heard a lot of good information, but this business about, um, smoking marijuana outside, remember when I was saying earlier to the ladies who were here before, that their calls don't involve drugs, prostitution, and violence? There you go, you got drugs, you see? So noise ordinance is not drugs, uh, and, and various other things that, that they had were, are not drugs. You start calling about drugs, we got another situation, okay?
Well, there was three boys that got-
But we need police reports, police reports, police reports.
Well, the three boys that got, that broke into the business, all of them got pardons against them.
Yeah, we'll see that, and that will be obviously criminal activity.
Right.
So, thank you. We've got a couple more folks. I think Counselor House wants to speak.
Thank you.
I have a question for the city attorney, just to make sure I understand what you said about revoking the business license.
Uh-huh.
That was convictions against the owner or the agent of the owner, not the, not the residents of the house.
Correct. It's the agent. Correct. Owner or manager or their agent.
Okay. So any kind of conviction against the young men, unless it falls under the violence, drugs, so forth, doesn't, doesn't help us as far as-
As far as license revocation.
Take action on the license.
Right, that wouldn't apply.